The November 15th, 2010 meeting of the Sammamish City Council. This is a special meeting, ordinarily a study session, but we're going to do a little voting tonight. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor John Warren.
Present.
City Mayor Nancy Whitton. Councilmember Mark Coss.
Present.
Councilmember John Curley.
Present.
Here.
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 I believe Nancy said she'd be a few minutes late.
Nancy.
Okay. Oh. Michelle, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here comes Mr. City Manager.
How are you?
We're fine. I do have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
In second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of six-zero, the agenda is approved. Next is presentations and proclamations, and what we have here on the agenda is King County Sheriff's East Precinct Command Center and Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This topic that we've been discussing with the King County Sheriff's Office in terms of relocating the two precinct offices of the County Sheriff, one in Kenmore, the other one in Maple Valley, to here in Sammamish. The subject location is City Hall, second floor. That we built that excess space at the time that when we were building the City Hall because it was fairly inexpensive and also looking at for the future growth of the city. I was hoping tonight that I would have all the details worked out and a potential memorandum of understanding to be presented before you. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. We're still working the details. There's some tenant improvements need to take place upstairs in second floor. We also have some parking issues that we need to address. So, I wanted to give you a quick update as to, we're still working with the Sheriff's Office. This will be a win-win situation for both the City of Sammamish as well as the Sheriff's Office. The win for the Sammamish is, obviously, we'll be leasing this space at the market rate. One. Two is, we will have this additional patrol presence in our streets at literally no cost to us because those patrol officers will be coming and going out of this particular precinct office. Sheriff wants to consolidate her offices. She is now located in two different places. With the latest annexations took place in the region, big one is particularly in the Kirkland area, Kirkland-Winey area. She thinks that her center of gravity is no longer in Kenmore location. So this would actually consolidate her offices. Total combined square footage of the space that she has currently in these two different locations, locations greater than the square footage that we could offer. Our space here, 7,000 square feet, that space is sufficient enough for her to meet her needs. Our goal is that during the month of December and early part of the January, to work through the details and come back to you sometime in middle of January with some sort of a memorandum of understanding. Mike Sauerwine and our police chief, they've been very intimately involved in this process. Again, I probably have more questions than the answers at this juncture, otherwise I would have brought a memorandum of understanding. What I do believe in principles, this will be a good arrangement for both parties. We just need to make sure that it will work for both parties. That concludes the staff report. Unless Chief and Mike, you guys have anything else to add to it?
Any questions for City Manager or the Chief or Mike?
Mr. City Manager, what's the downside?
I did ask that question multiple times, but I cannot identify any downside at this juncture.
They had no downside answers.
Well, the financial arrangement needs to work, so that's the part that I need to work through it. If we can make that thing work, I don't see a downside to the city.
Mark and Nancy.
The sole concern I'd have, I think it's a real positive for the city to have this work, but we do have a parking shortage here on our campus, and I'm concerned that this could, you know, tighten our parking. So, if I was looking for a downside to this, I would say that it's the impact on parking here at City Hall.
We're actually working on the parking. There will be additional 30-plus parking spots that we'll be providing it. That's on the west side of the building where we have currently about 12 or 14. We will be expanding that parking. There is some cost associated with that. We'll try to get a good handle on the cost because we need to do some storm drainage improvements. So, staff is diligently working on those details at this juncture. So, no, we would not lease that space without providing some additional parking spaces.
Nancy.
If the market recovers in, say, five years, eight years, and we get another building boom going hypothetically, would we need that space? I mean, how can you protect the city's right and desires to expand within the space if it's occupied by the precinct?
Good question, Deputy Mayor. Hopefully, market will recover. Hopefully, we will get to the point where we used to issue, we used to issue 400-plus building permits a year.
Hopefully, we won't.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
But last year, we were down to 67. This year, we went up to 150, so we see some movements. To direct answer to your question, the space that we currently occupy allow us to manage that level of workload. I can't imagine that we're going to exceed more than 450 or 500 building permits per year. Even if we do, we still have some empty cubicles downstairs space right here that we should be able to manage.
The other thing, though, is the city, some council members are more interested in pursuing shorter term than longer term. I think longer term, we're all kind of going with thinking about the water district and what might happen. I mean, that might, again, to consolidate and save money, if that ever came about. We don't have crystal balls, but, you know, it's kind of, that would be my concern, is to make sure the agreement is carefully considered in that context, too, is not just the building growth, but the possible expansion of the city into other service areas.
We thought about that, too, that currently, if there was any consolidation, joint effort to take place, what we're focusing on, perhaps, providing the customer service from one location. And that location, in terms of getting a front counter person, we do have a space downstairs. I would not imagine that we would be moving all the functions of another jurisdiction into this building, and there won't be need for that to do that in the long run.
Thank you.
John.
So, in your negotiations, is it a market rent that is paid?
Yes, we made it clear it needs to be a market rental rate.
Other questions?
Did I miss, like, numbers of people and do they need jail space?
No, they don't need a jail space. We have already holding cells here, the two holding cells that we use. Perhaps Chief, you can help me answer this question better. The holding cells will be sufficient enough, but the jail, primarily jail, unincorporated King County, use the King County Jail, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, that won't be an issue for us.
So, we don't need any more holding cells?
I don't believe we're going to need any more holding cells. Right now, they're not used even on a daily basis, just because we don't book a lot of prisoners in this area. We don't hold a lot of prisoners. Those are meant for temporary, it's a temporary holding facility for prisoner before they go to jail, and we just don't have a need to use them that often, although we use them probably every three or four days. And adding the additional precinct upstairs, that's not going to increase it to the point where we would have to expand the facility at all.
So, what I don't understand is, what is a precinct? What is a precinct made up of? Did I miss that? Did he go over that?
No.
But he says a precinct, I don't know what that is.
Sure. A precinct is a police station, and the Sheriff's Office uses the term precinct. So, right now, we have a north precinct in Kenmore, which has a command staff, which has your command staff, your supervisors, and your patrol personnel, and some detectives. We have another location like that in southeast King County. We have another one in southwest King County. And so, this is a combined precinct of north and southeast King County combined into one precinct, is what it is. One station for them all.
Total number of bodies is about 35 or 36.
That's correct.
People we're talking about. Most of these positions will be 85 office-type of positions. There's going to be some patrol officers that are patrolling the unincorporated county.
Administrative-type people. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Eric. What we would predominantly constructing is office space, and if you want to see a model of what we'd be constructing, we're using the office space on the second floor where the Parks Department and the Finance Department currently are as kind of the model. So, you would see offices, conference rooms, cubicles. It wouldn't really look that different than what you're used to in a typical city office space.
So, the current precincts up in Kenmore and in Maple Valley, do they have holding cells?
Yes, they do.
One or two in each?
Maple Valley, I believe, has two or three, and Kenmore, I don't get up that way very often. I'm not sure exactly how many they have. But just, I think I know where you're going with that, Mayor, and it's, what the Sheriff's Office is looking at doing is also maintaining some satellite facilities in southeast King County where you can take prisoners there. So, you're not going to have all of east King County's bookings coming here, like Mr. Sauerwine said.
Oh, good. We don't want all the big bad guys to come to town.
Now, that wouldn't be the case, that in this technological age also, that the offices are all equipped with all the computers and the bells and whistles in their vehicles, and it wouldn't be efficient for them to bring the prison here from South King County, then to take to King County Jail, so they would be probably doing the direct transport.
John.
Nate, are they dispatched out of here?
Dispatched.
I mean, are they sitting here, and all of a sudden, there's a call, and they go ripping out onto 228th at 80 miles an hour?
Shouldn't be. No. We really don't even do that now here in Sammamish.
Right, because we don't have any crime.
Well.
I wouldn't say that.
We have very little crime.
Compared to some areas, we have very little crime.
Right.
That's correct. No, I mean, police officers are supposed to be in the field in general.
Okay.
They're supposed to be in the field patrolling throughout King County.
Okay.
So, yeah, they would be most likely in their patrol area.
In their area. Okay, gotcha.
There's going to be times where they'll be in the station, but that's not very often.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Tom.
Nate, before I run off, one of the things I've noted about the current operation is a lot of the deputies are leaving their cars here as opposed to taking them home with them. Are we going to see an increase in the resident population of cars, which could actually have a greater impact on parking than we might be anticipating?
They'll be in the back.
They'll pick an additional parking spot that we'll be providing.
So, the additional parking's going to take care of that. Most of the cars you see out here are spare cars. They're not, they're not cars that officers aren't taking home with them. For the most part, unless they're on vacation, the officers take their cars with them.
Okay.
We do have a couple, a few spare cars out there right now.
Any other questions? No? Thanks, Nate.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll give you a more detailed report in January.
Next, we have public comment, and here's the sign-up list. Thank you, Melanie. First is Steve Wright.
Hello, Steve Wright, do you want my address? I put it down on, no? Okay. So, I missed the Parks and Recreation Commission application night last Thursday.
Steve, you want to put your name and address?
You do want all that, okay. Apologize. Steve Wright, W-R-I-G-H-T. I live at 23521 Northeast 10th Place. So, I apologize for missing the interview session last Thursday. I had a minor medical procedure that I had to take care of. I just wanted to reintroduce myself. I was, for some of you, I've not met you, but some of you I've met before, and I was on the Parks and Rec Commission for a full term, three years, and prior to that, I served one year as an alternate. What my passion is and the reason I want to rejoin the Commission is, I have three children, and I don't think we're doing enough in this city for young children. The programmed side of recreation, I'd like to see more of that. I know that a lot of people on the Parks Commission believe in open space, and of course, I believe in open space, but my passion really is the programmed recreation, the community center, the idea of a community center, the idea of an aquatic center. Those are the things that really get me going. The teen center, I think that that's happening still, and that's fantastic. I'd love to see more of that. I'd love to see more programming with the south side of the city and the north side of the city, so the leagues are interacting a little bit more. Right now, I live here on the north side. I used to live on the east side, and it's like two different cities if you're talking about youth sports and activities and things like that. So, I'd like to do what I can to improve that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I appreciate the time that you've given me, and hopefully, you'll consider my application.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next is Gail Stacey Michaelman.
Thank you. Gail Stacey Michaelman, 1201 250th Avenue, Northeast, Sammamish. I, too, missed the interviews, and I am very sorry. I had a heart, I had an actual asthma attack, and the Overlake wouldn't let me out of Commission for it. They wouldn't let me come. I really tried, but they said no. So, what I wanted to do is, I just wanted to reiterate also my passion for the Parks and the Commission, and the importance of the whole aspect of improving and getting the Parks Commission so it's up where we have levels of expertise, where we are able to evaluate the aquatic center and the community center and the other programming areas that can be expanded and enriched in this program, because I believe that the Commission could really help the council. The council has some wonderful expertise, and it's noticed throughout the years, and I'd like to see that we could, the Parks Commission also, to raise up and to get some level where we would have a broader knowledge per person of your expertise, of the different ways of sports areas, programming areas, facility areas, to help the staff also, and to be able to work on budgets to assist the council more than they've been able to in the past. I was on the council before and the Commission before, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I changed my residency, and I am applying for the non-resident position. And I would like to, I believe with the community center being an aspect that we're looking at, the community outside of the city Sammamish is going to be an important aspect and is going to need to be drawn in, used, fundraised in, and to help support the, our community here. So, that's one area, so that's what I'm applying for. So, again, thank you very much, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. Any questions that the council has?
Oh.
Ms. Tom.
Gail, exactly where do you live? How far to town are you?
How far to, out of town? I am. I cannot go in or out of town without driving through the city of Sammamish. Do you know your new roundabout that's over on 244th? That's where I live.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Nope. Seeing none, then we move on to unfinished business, and unfinished business first is the resolution appointing two members to the Sammamish Planning Commission. Melanie, do you have them popped up on here?
Mr. Mayor, for the Planning Commission members, we have two vacancies and two applicants, and you interviewed both of them at the last council meeting.
Right. Okay, so the decision's pretty easy in this case. I suggest I would, oop, my time's up. I suggest I would entertain a motion to appoint these two applicants to the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Discussion? Nancy?
You know, when I see judges in particular come up on a ballot with not being opposed, I don't usually vote for them. I mean, I don't vote against them. I just feel that our system works best when we have choices, and I don't know, we haven't ever adopted a formal policy. I think we're very blessed this time around to have two candidates who are quite qualified, but I still feel uncomfortable if there aren't more applicants than there are vacancies to fill. And I hope in the future that we look at a policy of, adopted beforehand, of opening up when it happens that people withdraw or whatever, and I think there were three people that withdrew, that we reopen the applications, just as a policy that we set. I just, just like I don't want to vote on my ballot for somebody who's unopposed, I feel uncomfortable in appoint, making appointments where there aren't more candidates than there are vacancies. I'm going to vote for them, but I think in the future, I'd like to consider a policy where we change it.
Okay. John.
Well, I thought it was gracious that at least one of the individuals said that they'd be willing to reopen it, and I think that would be appropriate if we felt, or personally if I felt, that the qualifications weren't there, and I think we have two candidates that look like they want to serve and are eager to serve, and they look like they'll have good things to add, and you never know what you get until they start serving, but I have a pretty good feeling about these two. So, in this instance, I don't think we need to reopen it, and that's why I made the motion.
Any other comments? No. I would point out that last year, we had a plethora of applicants for the Planning Commission, and I suppose people saw how many they had last year. Perhaps they were discouraged from reapplying this year. As Nancy did point out, we had more than two applicants, but a couple dropped out. So, are we ready for the question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Mike Collins and Michael Luxembourg to the Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of seven-zero, we have three, two new Planning Commissioners starting the first of the year.
You don't care what position they are, because the term of the, both positions expires at the same time. That's the 2014.
Correct.
So, let's just do maybe Mr. Collins for position three, and then Mr. Luxembourg as position number four.
Okay, very good. That's right, that was a formal resolution.
Right.
Okay, next is the appointments, appointment of three members to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and two of those members are for two years, two-year terms, is that, three? And one for one year. Let's see.
Position number four expires in 2013. Position number five expires on December 31st, 2013.
Right.
And the six expires in 2011.
And at the very back of your package material, you'll see the graph, and working on staggering the terms. So eventually, we'll get to the three, two, two.
Of four-year terms.
Of four-year terms, so.
Right. Mm-hmm. So, for the Parks Commission, Madam Deputy Mayor, you'll be pleased to know we have eight applicants for the three positions.
In fact, we have so many qualified ones, I don't know who to vote for.
Right. It's a tough situation. Now, we interviewed them last week, and except for Mr. Wright and Ms. Michaelman, who spoke in public comment today, and so we, pardon?
And the first one, we did not interview.
Dr. Bruce Siller couldn't be here because of the patient.
That's right. Correct. And then we did have an executive session to discuss qualifications, and you've had a chance to review their applications, so tonight, we're, I believe, ready to vote on this. And the procedure we're recommending is that you have ballots here at your place, and we may only need one ballot, but you have extra ones just in case there's a tie. So, I would suggest that we vote for our three favorite members, and the city clerk will tally them up, and the highest ones would get the three-year term, and the third place would get the one-year term.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. That's the same procedures that you had exercised, worked well in the past, so now it's time to cast your votes.
Mm-hmm. Is everybody ready to do that?
I can't find my ballot.
Here, you can use mine. It was here.
I found it.
Could save you use hers for sure you take her name off it.
That's right. I had enough paper on my desk.
Give you about 30 seconds.
So, we're just voting for the three people.
Three people.
Okay. Oh, you should put your name on it, too.
Your names are on the.
Yeah, they're on the top right here.
Oh, very good.
I read mine.
Awesome.
Sorry. I'm scared. Such a nice party.
While we're waiting for the rest of the votes, I did want to say that, as the Deputy Mayor said, we had eight wonderfully qualified candidates and very enthused about getting, participating in the city government process, volunteering their time, and there's a lot of time involved in the Parks Commission, because they break up into subcommittees with different specialties and really get in there and roll up their sleeves. I see one of our current Commissioners in the back of the room observing with much pleasure. Oh, and our Director, Jesse Richardson. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make while they're tallying the votes? Yes.
We could just make a ticking sound.
I should have Councilmember Curly filling time here.
That's all I do. Check the weather and the traffic.
Jesse, why don't you come up and tell us a little bit about what the Parks Commission does?
Really?
Last one wrong, Melanie, just, you need to.
Why don't you give us a soundbite that didn't air on Fox last night?
I think Councilmember Curly could do a little bit better job.
I'd like to hear what the Mayor, the Mayor was edited out of a story that ran on Fox last night. I'd like to allow him.
Oh, perfect. I'll sit down.
I didn't get the tape.
What did you say, though? Obviously, didn't make the, it's on the editing room floor.
Actually, I brought along my plaque. Pauline, you would be happy to know that my backyard habitat I brought along, and they saw it as very interesting. I was trying to point out that this city has a lot of wildlife in it, and we realized that they were here before we were, well, maybe their ancestors, anyway, and we'd like to coexist with them while we are here. Hopefully, we'll still be here in the future. But anyway, so I brought the plaque along and explained about our effort to make this city, and Pauline, why don't you come up to the microphone and tell us about the Habitat Project and how close we are to achieving it?
Shocking. This did not make the news.
Didn't, yeah, isn't that shocking?
Shocking.
Oh, I guess we're going to have more than one vote.
Hi, my name is Pauline Cantor. We are unofficially at 25 more points for, to become a certified backyard wildlife community, and we decided to focus on signing up schools, because we get five points per school.
Uh-huh.
And we're very optimistic about the new school.
we're very optimistic about the new school, I believe it's Creekside, and also East Lake High School, and possibly a few others, so. So, we're anticipating becoming certified, and we've sort of unofficially picked Earth Day as the possible time to celebrate our certification.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, we got the tabulation out there. Looks like Mr. Crandall got the most votes, so I assume that you would want to grant that one position to Mr. Crandall. But then we have three ties. So, maybe you could probably use your second ballots to break the tie among the last three applicants.
So, we have to vote for two?
Three. I'm sorry, two, two.
Any two, any two, including those we voted that aren't part of the three?
Among those three, the last three candidates, they just vote for two of those three, please.
Leave them up there, please, so we know who.
Right.
No, because I have one Mac and Ernie, so there's two more to vote somewhere. They could tie. There's two more, I mean, you know. Yeah.
The new council members really missed it when we came up with this system. I remember there was a lot of tough math that first time.
Remember Lee's?
So, Jesse, could you tell us more about the Parks Commission and what they do?
Have the Admiral get up.
So, what are some of the specialties that, that they're addressing now?
Well, we have a number of potlucks throughout the year.
And you, you Commissioners are responsible for the potluck?
Yes, they actually do all the cooking. No, in all seriousness, the Parks Commission is actually very busy right now. Our number one project is the six-year Park Plan update, which we started.
Got Odell Ron.
Odell. We started this year, and will finish at the end of, fall of 2011. They've also been working on your several master plans. What else we have going on right now, Pauline? Lots of subcommittees.
The Habitat, for one thing.
Habitat. Pro Plan? Oh, that's right, they're getting started on the Community Garden project.
That's good.
If the budget is adopted tomorrow, then we'll have funding to get a community garden started at Beaver Lake Park. And we're hoping that that will be 99% citizen-led. Parks Commission has the lead.
And you have some tours scheduled for Community Center, Aquatic Center, for the...
Yes, we do.
Uh-huh.
Hey, look, it's done. Can I stop talking now?
Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, looks like we have Mr. Wright with the second highest vote getter, so he'll be appointed. And then also, Mr. Moritz with number four. So, that concludes the appointment process.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Crandall to position number four, Mr. Wright to position number five, and Mr. Moritz to position number six of the Parks Commission?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just want to say thank you to everybody else who applied. It was a really tough choice.
It was indeed, and as our Parks Commissioner, who's now left, I guess she didn't want to speak anymore.
Jesse's there.
Oh, there she is.
Just hiding from you, that's all going.
Yeah. As we, as we learned, that they're very busy, and certainly, they would appreciate all those that applied but didn't get appointed to participate in the specialties. There's plenty of work and a lot of fun. After all, we have those potlucks, right? So, looking forward to that, and congratulations to those that got selected. Tom?
I'd like to thank everyone who applied, and whether you got appointed or not, I really do appreciate your taking the time from your lives to, to volunteer, to help the city out. It is a time commitment. Some people are really stressed to make the time commitment, and I really do appreciate it. I would also like to go back to the earlier discussion to encourage those that may be interested in the future. We do have openings from time to time, as people move out of town for job reasons or whatever. And the council does have to make an interim appointment. So, I would encourage those who have any interest at all, just to keep an eye on this process. And volunteer, if you're interested in the parks, they can always use their extra hands. Go to the Planning Commission meetings, find out what's going on there, and see if you're really interested. And we hope you do throw your oar in the water.
Good, good comment. Okay, are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor of the resolution appointing those three members to the Parks and Recreation Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of four, seven, and nothing, Resolution 2010-438 is approved. And the other one, the Planning Commission, was Resolution 2010-437. I failed to mention that. So, believe it or not, it's less than 10 after seven, now we have council reports. Let's start with Mark this time.
No report tonight.
Boy, this could be a record council meeting.
Michelle?
I was just noticing the lights on the temple up the street, and I didn't know if anyone had attended the festival, Diwali, but I know that I worked with, I worked with several East Indian people, and that seems to be their favorite holiday of the year. So, it's quite.
Our mayor attended that event.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, whenever there's a free meal. No, really, it was a wonderful celebration, and I had the privilege of actually lighting the first candles for it.
Oh, nice.
Oh, wow.
And they're always so pleasant over there, and nice and respectful, and the kids, too.
How long does the season for that last? Do you know?
Well, I knew last year. I forgot to ask this year.
Okay.
I'm not sure. It might be 20 days or something. And I don't quite remember the story, but the lights are to guide the, I guess I won't discuss it.
You better not.
I'll get in trouble.
Is there alcohol at this?
This is a very sensitive topic. You have to be exact.
It's sort of to ward off evil, you know, so. Different interpretations in different Hindu specialties. Help me out here.
You're doing just fine.
You're doing great, Mr. Mayor.
Stop digging, Mr. Mayor.
Michelle, is that the end of your report? Nancy?
I have no report.
John?
No report.
Tom?
The only thing I want to say is that the Mayor and I will be attending the Legislative Committee meeting for the Association of Washington Cities tomorrow at CTEC. Basically, a half-day meeting. And we're trying to put our plan together for how we deal with the Legislature this coming session, so stand by.
Yes. John?
The Mayor and I were at the East Side Transportation Partnership meeting on Friday, and I don't think we had many happy fellows, representatives from other cities, based on the Transit Task Force recommendations that just came out. And that's probably something that maybe we want to take a few minutes and discuss at some point before the next meeting next month, because it looks like they're going with, what did they call it?
Productivity. They're getting rid of 40, 40, 20. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Which is, which is an allocation of resources. When Metro is expanding, the 40% of the additional service hours should go to the east subarea, 40% to the south subarea, and 20% to the west subarea. And this was worked out about seven years ago, when it was pointed out that 60% of the service was going to Seattle, and the majority of the revenues was coming from the east and the south. So, that's been the philosophy, although it really, there hasn't been many new service hours in the last seven years, and now we're going the other direction. So, it's almost a moot point. But we noticed that the Task Force is specifically directing that it should be eliminated. The geographic equity is what we call it. They still count it as, as one of the criteria behind productivity and, well, what was the other one? Social equity. Social equity, I think. Very good. But I think most of the people at ETP, East Side Transportation Partnership, last Friday, well, we're all from the east side. And so, we're concerned that whereas we bring most of the revenue to Metro, or of the three subareas, we don't get that much service. We get about 17% of the service, if I recall.
To finish the report, there's a letter that Vice Chair Sunny Potter from Newcastle, fellow council member, wrote, and I could read it tonight, or do you think it would be more appropriate to distribute the letter?
Yeah, let's distribute it.
What we would like to do at some point in time, and the consensus seemed to be after he read what he thought was a strongly worded letter, that it wasn't strong enough. Was the impression I had, that the east side, if his voice was reflective of the group, and I think, again, it could be even more stern, that the dissatisfaction level was going to be pretty intense. So, to protect our interest of east side cities, there will be a letter being presented to King County Executive Constantine from East Side Transportation Partnership. And I don't know, who else is going to chime in on that? Don, you're...
Sunny and I and the staff are going to.
Great.
Going to redraft it.
So, that's something Don will look to your input on, in addition to mine, before next month's meeting.
Sure. So, maybe, maybe we can send the email around to the rest of the council and...
Because I don't have it in a, my copy's marked up, and I don't have the original.
We'll give it to Melanie for, for the record also, maybe.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it electronic distributed.
We've got a letter in our packet regarding the former Burlington Northern Rail alignment through the east side, stretching up to Snohomish County. And it was kind of confusing, and I wasn't sure what was involved there. So, if we were to talk about that, it would, I would like to hear some more about that, or what ETP is thinking about that particular proposal for transportation on the east side.
The Burlington Northern Santa Fe Corridor, was it roughly 40 miles or something like that, has been acquired for, it's in public ownership now. And Sound Transit had apparently tabled further funding for it. They were going to contribute, so it's sort of, it needs additional funding. And Steve Burry, from Newcastle Council Member, thought that we should have that on the legislative agenda, to go down to the Legislature to seek further funding. Well, this is not a year for seeking further funding from the Legislature, so I don't, I don't know how that will.
Is that funding for acquisition, or funding for development?
For development. And Joan McBride, from the Kirkland Council, said that Kirkland wouldn't support, as written, the, the letter that Newcastle presented, because there was no mention of non-motorized, and also, they're interested in tolling. I get, actually, Joan wouldn't support the letter that Sunny brought forth. I'm sorry. I was mixing two topics.
Because they don't want the train going through Kirkland, right? They want only...
No, I think I'm mistaken. I'm looking at my notes, and they weren't real good, because I was the chair. Joan's comment about Kirkland not supporting, is not supporting Sunny Potter's letter about the Regional Transit Task Force.
I, I don't think that was the comment. She was talking about tolling on 405.
Okay. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, she was, she was equally miffed, I think. There was nobody who objected to Sunny's letter, that I recall.
Okay. Boy, I must have been asleep still at that meeting. What we had was a report on the Hot Lane Project, which is to take the HOV lane, one or two of them on 405, and convert it into high occupancy toll lanes. And I think I asked whether they had considered going to full tolling of all the lanes, and...
At a lesser rate, even.
At a lesser rate, because they pointed out that under their scenario, it was like something, could be as much as 75 cents a mile. And if you want to take the 405 instead of I-5 going through Seattle, so you do the whole corridor, if it's, I'm not sure how long the corridor is.
Seven dollars, they figured out it'd be a $7.50 toll if you drove the whole length.
Oh, $75. $75 round trip, I think, to take the 405 corridor. See, it's 75 cents.
It's only the tolling length that they were, I was just going off Dick Paylor's comment, $7.50.
So, it was, it was a huge number. And so, there was a lot of discussion about that.
Well, you know, some of these are good ideas. Maybe in the spring, we'll have some time, or right after the first of the year, where we could discuss sort of the regional transportation issues, and get up to speed on them. And where it's appropriate, we could make some comments as a council.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, personally, and that's why we need to be reflective of your whole voice, and rather than Don or my personal opinion. I was for Don's comment, and I supported it in the meeting, about general tolling, because if the objective is reduce congestion, if you have peak hour tolling for everybody, it could push people into different times of days to get either no tolling or a lesser toll. Otherwise, everyone's going to be, you know, going the same time, and it's going to be, you know, the same toll. They're looking at it as a revenue source, and not as a way to pay for an extension of the south end for I-405, and not as a way to relieve congestion. I think we can do both. And then Sunny Potter was, is it Potter or Putter?
Putter.
Putter, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Sunny Putter also brought up his objection to the three-plus, and I kind of concurred with that, too, because if you've ever been on 520, and everywhere else is two to form a carpool, but there it's three, and they're issuing speeding tickets, or traffic tickets, everybody with two in their car versus three, it gives the people that have two in their commuter pool no incentive to carpool.
Right.
And those are the vast majority of people, are two in the car. So, there's some things, I think, that could be tweaked with the pattern, and with the plan, rather. And I think Don had some good ideas that the group seemed to be supportive of.
Okay. I have a question. Is the, with the tolling, is the hot lanes, are they going to have any additional lane construction?
No.
So, you'd be, on a three-lane, you'd be down to one general purpose lane?
No, it's five lanes total, and two, one would, is already an HOV lane. They would make a second lane a hot lane. Is that how it would work?
Yeah, I can't remember.
But there are huge portions of 405 that are only three lanes.
Well, they're looking to add a lane.
So, they're looking, are looking to add a lane.
Yeah. I think the next phase of the project is adding from Bellevue North to I-5.
But they still have three lanes, and a lot of this is one going south.
Yeah. Okay, actually, the Mayor has no report. Thank you, thank you. City Manager report?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and there's no executive session?
Not tonight, but tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there anything we can do tonight, so we can have a shorter meeting tomorrow night?
No, because the agenda is specific for, for tomorrow night.
The executive session for tomorrow night is regarding potential litigation and property acquisition. I can't do potential litigation without the city attorneys being present.
Oh, but I mean, are there, so, we, okay.
This is a study session, too.
No, it's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting. We voted Commissioners on.
Actually, tomorrow night won't be too bad, because most of it's on the consent agenda.
It is a lot on the consent agenda. Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor. This is the earliest we've ever ended.